I'll this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing here, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all. Okay, we start with a roll call, please.
Hey, Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
And Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. And tonight, we're going to start off with a presentation. I guess I get a certificate of municipal leadership from the Association of Washington Cities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, can you hear us now?
I need to do it from back there.
That's about as loud as it gets.
I'll speak up.
How about now? Okay. Good evening, Council President, Council members. I am Kristi Rowland, your Deputy CAO and Administrator of Executive Services. I also serve as the President of the Washington City Council Management Association. In that capacity, I hold a seat on the Board of the Association of Washington Cities. So I am doubly honored to be here this evening. AWC's Certificate of Municipal Leadership Program recognizes mayors and council members for accomplishing training in five competency areas. AWC training provides city-elected officials with the knowledge they need to operate within the law effectively, plan for the future, secure and manage funds, foster strong relationships, and work to build more equitable communities. Without further ado, I'm delighted and honored to recognize the accomplishment of Mayor Armando Povoni in earning his Certificate of Municipal Leadership from the Association of Washington Cities. On top of all of us keeping him very busy as our mayor, he has earned 30 CML credits and attended at least one workshop in each of the five areas. He joins several others on council with this honorable distinction. Let's give Mayor Povoni a big round of applause.
All right, we have to take a picture.
We're going to get right in here. There we go.
All right, guys, one more.
There's more. It is also my honor to recognize Councilmember Ed Prince for receiving his Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership. The Advanced Certificate recognizes mayors and council members who continue striving for excellence and developing their leadership skills. The Advanced CML is earned by completing an additional 30 credits on top of the CML, which Councilmember Prince earned in 2015. This is done through conferences and training as well as demonstrating active community service. Please give Councilmember Prince a round of applause for his achievement.
How'd you guys know? Oh, yes. I guess you can do that.
Okay, everybody's actually blocking you.
Okay, now that we've finished awarding ourselves, we're going to finish on the rest of the meeting here. So next up is our administrative report.
All right. Tuesday, July 4th, no fireworks show from Jean Koulon Memorial Beach Park this year due to construction projects still underway. The park will close early at 7:00 PM and Kennydale Beach Park will close early at 8:00 PM. Also, there will be no Renton Farmers Market this day in observance of the holiday. Check your local listings for 4th of July activities in other areas. We'll see you next year. Henry Moses Aquatic Center is now open seven days a week through Labor Day. For information on times, programs, and to make reservations, please visit rentonwa.gov/hmac. Summer recreation programs and events for all ages and abilities are in full swing. For details and registration information, visit rentonwa.gov/recreation. For this and other information about parks and recreation, visit rentonwa.gov/parks or call 425-430-6600. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is all, sir.
All right, thank you. So next up is Audience Comment, what I assume a lot of you are here for. So when I call your name, please step up to the podium, give your name, city of address, and what you're here to address the council with. There's a little light and timer on the, right next to the clock there. When it turns yellow, please start wrapping up your comments. Let's see here, first up is Mark Peterson.
Well, good evening, Honored Mayor, esteemed council members, and friends and neighbors. My name is Mark Peterson, and I live in Kennydale neighborhood where I have lived for 20 years. Tonight, my neighbors and I are here to present concerns we have about the plan for converting an existing right-of-way into an alley to accommodate a building code we feel not intended for application to individual lots in an existing mature neighborhood. We do not realize the potential of any alley development until a contractor begin building a new home on our street. We noticed that the foundation placement is not typical of our neighborhood setbacks, and further investigation showed increased potential for redevelopment to include adding an alley in a narrow right-of-way behind all of our homes. Within two weeks, we created a neighborhood committee, collected over 80% of signatures of the property owners abutting, opposing potential access, and submitted the required paperwork to request the city vacate this right-of-way, which I actually submitted this morning. Cause number is VAC-23-001. Collectively, we are very concerned about the impact on our privacy, our safety, and the negative influence this would have on the culture of our neighborhood. We are protective of the Kennydale culture and feel it would be adversely affected. The Kennydale neighbors are a dedicated group of concerned citizens that want to see the right kind of development in our beautiful neighborhood. We do not feel that this is the right kind of development. As you listen to the upcoming comments, please consider how you personally would be affected if this were to happen in your backyard. Thank you for your time.
Next is Brian Bednarz. Probably not pronouncing that correctly.
Hello, my name's Brian Bednarz. I've been a Kennydale resident for 10 years, and I'd also like to speak about the potential of, a potential alley in the Kennydale area. The eastern alley access to Park Avenue North would be within a few feet of a summit of the hill that already having sightline issues for cars pulling out on 31st and 32nd Street. The existing western stub alley access to Burnett Avenue North has sightline issues imposed by the adjoining property fence. Orienting garages into alleys imposes greater turning clearance issues for cars accessing those garages. And opposed to street-facing garages, provides additional parking spots, keeping parking vehicles off the street. Alleys increase the potential for burglaries and other crimes. The Arizona State University Center for Problem-Oriented Policing stated in their 2005 publication, Response Guide Number Two, "Reducing through traffic by closing streets or alleys means that burglars cannot so easily gain access to properties, especially from alleys behind houses." Thank you.
This is Pat Conger.
Hi, my name is Pat Conger, and I live at 1217 North 32nd Street in Kennydale. I've been a resident of Renton for the last 27 years. I've come to this meeting with my neighbors to try to stop the city's plan to develop the alley between North 31st and North 32nd Streets in Kennydale. I have serious concerns about the safety of such a change. An alley would make my home more accessible to the public, and studies have shown that alleyways make neighborhoods more vulnerable to crime because an alley increases the access points to a home. How much easier is it as a burglar to be able to check out houses from the back? They can see what's in the backyard worth stealing, if people are at home, avoid houses with a dog, et cetera. The Justice Department did a literature review on whether closing alleys would reduce crime. The report found studies showing that closing alleys had reduced crime in Charlotte, Hartford, Los Angeles, and St. Louis. Also, the city of Phoenix has been gating alleys to reduce crime. Plus, an alley can become a dumping ground for refuse, which is why there are signs in alleys saying, "No dumping." Obviously, this has been a problem at some point. In thinking this through to everyday use, it seems there will also be a safety issue with there being less visibility backing a car out of an alley-facing garage. There might be a six-foot fence or storage unit on either side of a driveway right up to the property line. How would you see a child on a bicycle, or skateboard, or a pedestrian coming past until it's too late and you back into them? Our neighborhood is very mixed, older homes and newer ones. This new law that was written by the city in 2015 requires all new construction on our streets to have rear-entry garages. However, several new homes have been built since then that don't have rear garages. How did they manage to get building permits from the city? If you need specifics, I will be happy to give you a list of homes built since 2015 that were not required to comply with this law. Please consider this, and in thinking about it, consider your own home. If you don't have an alley already behind you, would you want one? Our streets have been without a developed alley since 1904, and we don't see a reason for one now. Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, thank you. And just so everybody knows, this is the first time the council's hearing of this. I was just briefed minutes ago about this. So a lot of this information will be new to them. And just for clarification, the city doesn't have plans. This isn't a city plan to build an alley. It's a private development, so. All right, next up is Seth William Parklick. Seth?
I have three copies of this. If you'd like to read along, anybody?
No, we're fine. You just give them to the clerk. That would be good.
My name is Seth Pavlik, and since 1995, my family has owned the property that we recently built a beautiful custom home on in Kennydale. My late father Roy lived there before my wife and I started our family there 12 years ago. We built the house because it was my mother's dream to have a wheelchair-accessible first-floor home for her golden years. Our house was finished in September of 2019. We were allowed to build the detached garage with the front-facing driveway entrance because there was no existing alleyway at the time. Currently, there is still no alleyway behind our property, nor should there ever be. Examining the language in the ordinance number 5744, it reads, "For lots abutting in alley, all parking areas and/or attached or detached garages shall not occur in front of the building and/or in the area between the front lot line and the front building line. Parking areas and garages must occur at the rear or side of the building, and vehicular access shall be taken from the alley." This clearly states, "For lots abutting in alley." It doesn't say anything about right-of-ways or future possible alleyways, but "for lots abutting in existing alley." There are a multitude, multitude, sorry. There are a multitude of reasons that those of us potentially affected oppose the idea of an alleyway behind our properties. One of the primary reasons is safety. From first-response teams having to respond to alley incidents from the street fronts to unwanted criminal activity gaining access from behind our homes, this proposed alleyway will reduce safety and increase vulnerability and uneasiness for all of us affected by it. This ordinance was intended to affect new developments primarily intended for high-density housing. Our particular block is anything but. In fact, the new houses being built while zero-setback Ultra Monstrosity McMansions are still somehow single-family. Lastly, while there is more to be said on the topic, such as the negative environmental impact, I'd like to end my thoughts on this here tonight by saying that idealistically, the alley might theoretically be a good idea on paper, but it doesn't exist, and it shouldn't exist because it just doesn't fit. The Lower Kennydale neighborhood is already super mashed together. We barely have backyards to speak of to begin with. We hardly have street parking as it is, and this proposed alleyway will only make things worse. This ordinance was intended for high-density new developments, not established neighborhoods like Lower Kennydale. Please consider vacating the right-of-way between North 31st and 32nd Streets, between Burnett Avenue North and Park Avenue North, and thank you for your time and consideration. And, uh, do we have people on Zoom that can see this? Can you see them on Zoom? Oh, that's too bad, because, yeah, I was hoping to have everybody that's at their homes be able to, like, raise their hand and say, "We're here too." But just curiosity out of a show of hands, how many people are here opposing the alleyway in Lower Kennydale? All right?
All right, thank you. Next up is Michelle Peterson.
My name is Michelle Peterson, and I've lived in Lower Kennydale for 20 years. When my husband and I first moved to Kennydale as newlyweds, many homes, including ours, were small bungalow-style homes. It's one of the things we love about the area. Our neighborhood has evolved. Our home is still a small bungalow-style home, but one of the few. In addition to the issue of safety that has been and will be mentioned often by our other speakers, dumping is a real issue as well. Our home is on a corner paralleling a sidewalk and is about a block from 7-Eleven. Many times, I've found that someone has walked by and tossed garbage into my garden, which for me, I get to find and pick up on their behalf. Imagine how it might be to find a bag of trash, or needles, or a TV, or other drug paraphernalia scattered down an alley running behind my house. Consider the potential of public access for dumping on three sides of my property. It feels overwhelming to me. Across the street from my house, we've had to change, we've had to chase off people found in cars shooting up because it's currently a property in transition due to a sale. No one is living there right now, and it's dark and handy. Imagine how handy an alley might be for that very same activity. I request, along with all my neighbors, that the council would approve vacating this proposed alley because the city of Renton will not want to add Lower Kennydale on their regular route, complaint route. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Marzina Dominic.
Honorable members of the city council, my name is Marzina Dominic. I live on 1001 North 32nd Street in Lower Kennydale. I was born in Poland. I am a naturalized American citizen. I came to the United States to build my family's dream. And I found this beautiful, amazing place with the view on the lake and fell in love with it and bought our first property. A very small, tiny house built in 1908. One of the first ones in the neighborhood. We've lived in this house for about 15 years now. We're raising our children there. We have three beautiful children. And I came here today to express my deep concern. My family's deep concern. My husband cannot be here today because he's sick. Regarding the proposed right-of-way between the North 32nd and North 31st Street in Lower Kennydale. As a resident of this community, I strongly believe that the proposed development doesn't improve the neighborhood. I feel that the proposed alley greatly serves the profitability of builders who come to this neighborhood because of its natural beauty. The proposed alley gives builders the possibility of building bigger houses with smaller offsets. It gives them the possibility to cut trees without any consideration so that they can get views on the lake. But it also brings problems to our small community. On top of it, we, my husband has been communicating with different departments within the city of Renton, trying to understand the process and what has been decided, what has been approved, also trying to access information online. And we discovered that, or we left, we were left with an impression that the, that we, that our concerns, the residents who live there, are not being the priority. They are not being, we're not, we're almost feeling neglected in the process. We believe that our neighborhood's development should be prioritized to serve the well-being of its residents, the preservation of the environment, and also the safety of our children and ours. And therefore, my family is urging the city council to reconsider this development and initiate a thorough and inclusive process that considers the concerns of the community. And we would like to uphold the, the community values and the cooperation between the community and the, and the city. So through engagement, transparency, and responsible decision-making. Thank you very much for your attention and consideration of this matter.
Thank you. Next up is Barry Conger.
Hi, thanks for having us today. My name is Barry Conger. I live at 1217 North 32nd Street. My immediate neighborhood stands to be impacted by a proposal to clearcut a strip of forest trees and green space to create a 10-foot-wide alleyway extending about a quarter of a mile from Burnett Avenue to Park Avenue between 31st Street and 32nd Street in the Lower Kennydale area. It will eliminate six to eight large cedar, spruce, and climax forest trees. These trees and the adjacent green space are important culturally and environmentally. They provide a sense of mindfulness and peace. They also provide a home to wildlife, including eagles which fly over Kennydale Beach and Jean Koulon Park. The green space prevents water runoff damage and mitigates Lake Washington pollution. Are these trees really important culturally? The closest river to them is the Cedar River. The recent artwork on Kennydale's newest water reservoir are cedar trees. Let's try to keep them real and not just a memory. A new ornamental tree on a 15-foot patch of grass in the front yard of a home will not be the same as these beautiful trees. I understand decisions is this, and what is best is a difficult one. Let's do the simplest choice. Let's leave them be. It would make us all more peaceful, grounded, and proud. They really are a treasure for us all. Thank you all for your time. I would encourage as many of you as you can to visit the neighborhood to see firsthand what is proposed, and talk to those you see here today, my neighbors, and ask any questions you have, and come to your own conclusions. Thank you.
Next up is Lynda Neely.
Hello, my name's Lynda Neely. I moved to Lower Kennydale in the year 2000 with my little baby twins. They went to Kennydale Elementary. I was a single mom and raised both those kids in the neighborhood and plan to retire there. Unfortunately, the costs associated with putting an alley behind my house would probably price me out of a rebuild. I'm in one of the small bungalows with some giant trees in the backyard. So on a personal level, any enforcement of the code, while it's been inconsistent, the consistent application of it would prohibit me from moving forward with my plan to retire in the neighborhood. I also have some very giant trees in the back in between mine and my neighbor behind me's property. They're probably over 100 years old, and they're definitely home to a lot of wildlife. And while they're annoying because they drop a lot of leaves and pine cones a lot of time, I enjoy the oxygen that they provide, and they're holding the hillside up. Lower Kennydale has some drainage issues, some natural springs. They pop up right down the middle of several of the yards, and I'm afraid a major development plan along that side of the hill would push water to places that no one would expect. So those are my comments. Thank you very much for listening.
All right, thank you. The next up is Kim Luliass.
Hi, my name is Kim Luliass, and I've lived on North 31st Street for 19 years. The Minutes from the City Council Meeting on September 16th, 2013 approved the implementation of building code RMC 4-4-80-F-7-B. This code is being used to direct developers to create alleys where right-of-ways exist on 31st and 37, 32nd Street Block, and a couple other ones in our neighborhood. The Minutes from that meeting state that the alley garage access would only be applied for new developments. Community and Economic Development Administrator Chip Vincent stated, in quotes, "Administrative code interpretation is principally for new developments in new subdivisions and would not be applied to individual lots," end of quote. Our neighborhood isn't a new development. In fact, its history is older than the city of Renton. Mr. Vincent also stated in that meeting on September 16th, 2013, this is pre-approval of the code, "The administration of this, of the, the administration has the ability to modify or provide for a variance to allow for the front-loading of infill lots if necessary," end of quotes, which has occurred on a few homes that have been redeveloped since the enactment of this code, especially on 33rd and 33rd Place. I'd like to submit a copy of the Minutes from that meeting with a mention of the alley access highlighted for all of you to read.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, next up is Gretchen Wicks. All right, next up is Gretchen Wicks.
My name is Gretchen Wicks. I'm a 19-year resident at 1112 North 31st Street in Lower Kennedale. You've heard from my fellow neighbors and concerned citizens in the Kennedale neighborhood. I believe we've expressed to you our desire to not have an alley in our backyards. Contractors that we have spoken to have expressed a desire to not have to fulfill this requirement for building in our established neighborhood as well. The culture of our neighborhood is that of families enjoying their private space, space that would be eliminated with the addition of an alley behind our homes. We love having green space, large trees, and the birds and other critters that find their homes in their green space. In the age of porch pirates and increased theft, we're concerned about our security with the possibility of more access to areas that can be violated without neighbors' watchful eyes. The addition of an alley creates traffic where it has never been, and with the additional curb and gutter requirements decreases parking in front of homes. But most importantly, we want you to note that although no right-of-way, although a right-of-way exists, no alley has ever been constructed through the center of the 31st, 32nd Street Block. To be an alley, the right-of-way has to be made into an alley. No alley currently exists on this street except for a partial alley that is serving two homes that were built just this year. We don't want it to extend any further. Furthermore, we have initiated the alley abandonment process with approximately, in fact, more than 80% resident agreement. Several of those lots are actually owned by a contractor, potentially to be built in the future, and they have also agreed with us. As not all our neighbors have chosen to speak tonight, I would like the residents of 31st and 32nd to make yourselves known. I think Seth did that as well. And our Zoom people also make their aware, make you aware of their presence and show their support for this request. We'd like to ask you to place a moratorium on the practice of alley access garages in our established neighborhood and help to abandon this right-of-way as it has been done on most of the other streets in Lower Kennedale. Thank you for your attention.
All right, next up is Gary Purnay, I believe.
My name's Gary Purnay. I've been living in Kennedale for 52 years, so I'm probably one of the older people there. And it's been great. It's been a nice neighborhood to live in. I come here for support. I already didn't write anything down, but I just have to agree with everybody that's been up here so far. And so we just need to do something so nobody can put an aisle way, I mean, a right-of-way between 31st and 32nd.
Thank you. And next up is Dutch Douche Man, Deutschman.
That's why they call me Dutch. I can't pronounce my last name. Thank you so much for, for this fantastic show of force here with the VFW. I'm an incorporated area of Renton.
Recording in progress.
I'll get my minute back. And for the last 46 years, same, same home. I'm also a lifetime member, proud member of the VFW here, 1263. First time I was ever over here at the post was 1977 was my visitation there. Some of you might know me from Save the Cedar River. Thank you for your support with that. Now I'm looking for new support, so. That post is open in 1933, okay? We have members there that were alive prior to 1933. We've been talking about losing the parking stalls out there, and it's really, the connector project to us is starting to become the disconnector project. We're starting to feel disenfranchised and a little bit disrespected, and I don't want to argue about that point. What we'd like to do is compromise. Instead of putting a dam across the Cedar River and not letting the fish come up and spawn, we want our members to be able to park around the hall, around the post. But we'd like to meet with the people on the, on the planning committee. It's very important. And with the architecture, we've got some really good ideas that maybe we can compromise with each other. But we've got to respect our elders. I can't see someone who's 90 years old going down in the parking garage on their cane or walking, the walker, and trying to make it down in 30-degree weather when it's pouring down rain. It's not going to happen. We're going to call access to get down there. But anyway, it's going to affect our revenues. Recently, I was elected as the House and Canteen Chair thanks to the members here. And they're relying upon, relying upon us to keep that post viable. We want to be viable. In the red house next door, I went over and talked to the principal over there, and they're adamantly against the, they just don't want the project to happen. But we can understand letting the project happen, but let's sit down and talk about it, okay? Let's not just jump to conclusions that nobody is interested in talking. So I would like to start that dialogue at some point in time, and we'd like to do it over at the post if possible. So there's my yellow light, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And next up is Christopher Farish.
Hello, I came to talk about the right-of-way plan on 31st and 32nd Street. I've only been living there for a couple of years, but I came from North Seattle where there's a lot of crime, and I found a safe little street to, to live on. There's a sense of community there. I don't know if you remember the old TV show Home Improvement, when Tim Allen used to talk to Wilson behind his fence. Some of our neighbors have that same fence. We talk to each other all the time. This plan would, would mess up with that. We have a lot of sheds in the back of our properties. Those would be destroyed. I think almost every one that I can see from my neighborhood has one of those. There's hundreds of trees in the neighborhood behind our houses. There's squirrels, birds, eagles nesting in these trees. Yes. King County just came out with a study about heat islands in the city of Seattle and Renton. This would demolish hundreds of trees, which creating another heat island in our neighborhood. We don't want that. In the winter, on Park, between 31st and 32nd is a steep hill. Everybody sleds on this hill. Whenever the snow comes, the snowplows, don't get there the first day, second day, we'll get some service, but there's snow, there's people sledding on this. So it makes it very hard to get up that hill. One car could block the whole system if there was an easement there. We have usable space now in our backyards. We don't need concrete and asphalt. Change for change's sake doesn't always equal progress. This plan will not improve our neighborhood. We have an oasis of tranquility in our backyards and want to keep that. So let's not continue with this ineffective and aimless plan. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And next up is Michael Westegard.
Hello, Michael Westegard, Renton, Mr. Mayor, Council, and President. Thank you for your time. I'm here to talk about the minimum wage study that was just reviewed. And I want to thank the staff for the presentation they put together. But I also want to recognize that while there was limited response to the city survey, it sounds like about 130 respondents to around 63,000 emails. And those concerns are a lot of the same concerns we've heard for minimum wage increases, both in the city of Seattle, Sea-Tac, and Tuck Willa beforehand. And obviously, Tuck Willa, we're still in the implementation process. But we haven't seen any big flight of business or any of the doom projections coming to reality. So of course, we should be concerned and try to meet with people. And as part of the Raise the Wage campaign, we have a small business outreach group, and we are doing that work. So we're trying to address the issues as we go along with the campaign. But also, we also need to recognize that in this outreach, we've bumped into working people across the range, whether they live here or not, that are struggling to survive. They're on the verge of being unhoused. They're having struggle affording groceries. They're, they're just having trouble getting along. They're missing their kids because they're working more hours, they have multiple jobs, and that's not fair. And I'll also recognize that in the survey, it was focused on business, and that leaves out workers. There were no alternative languages presented in the emails. There, there were just a lot of missing points in collecting of information and data. So while it is an inconclusive dataset, as they represented, and it is the dataset that they got, the dataset left out the people that are going to be most affected by this. And it still said that the majority of the employers are pretty close to already at that point, where they're paying close to that $19 an hour. So I'm a little skeptical of the finding that their biggest concern is cost of implementation in these different things, but they're already paying the wage, so there's not going to be really any implementation. But again, we, we need to stay open lines of communication, but those don't really match up to me. But also, one concern that I was hearing is that it's only about 6,000 workers that are at that wage level and living in the city of Renton, out of the 60,000 workers in the city of Renton. But I think that points to the fact that people are chasing higher wages than other cities. So we are losing those workers to these other cities, and they are buying their lunches. They are picking up their groceries before they go home in these other cities, and that is a loss of revenue. That is a cost of tax revenue, and that is a loss of just business within the community. So I, I think there are a lot of points, but I think we also need to see the whole Also, we see that of this data point from the information we've received, about a third of working people, so about 20,000 working people in the city of Renton are in the low-wage or under-wage AMI, which again, everything points to that the working people across the county are struggling. But with the city of Renton and the Raise the Wage ballot initiative, there are things that can be done, and we're trying to do the work. So I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Next up is Guillermo Zazuta, Zanuta, Zazuta. Zazuta.
Hey, everybody. My name is Guillermo Zazuta. I'm a Renton resident, and I would like to thank Council President O'Halloran, Mayor Pavoni, and the rest of the city council for their important work in representing our city. I'd like to provide some comment in response to the most recent committee presentation regarding the minimum wage increase in the city of Renton. To start, I would just like to thank the city staff, city attorney, and everyone else involved that participated in this process and provided an impact analysis. As a near-lifelong Renton resident, having grown up here in the Renton Highlands, living in an immigrant, working-class family, many of my family members working entry-level positions in childcare, healthcare, service work, grocery stores. This is, topic is an immensely important issue to me and my family, so I just want to thank you for taking that up, taking the time to discuss this topic. With that said, I do believe that there are major gaps in this impact analysis, because as I did find much of this presentation informative, this impact analysis does not consider the impact on everyday workers. And as far as I could tell, I would have appreciated more outreach be done to Renton residents, outside of Renton business owners. While it is important to consider their perspective of Renton business owners, it is important that Renton workers be heard on this very important issue, because right now, we're in a very crucial time where workers are struggling to make ends meet. Which is why I did very much appreciate Councilmember Rivera's question during the committee presentation regarding the business survey, if they had done any outreach to Renton workers. I also did appreciate Councilmember Ryan McIrvin's question regarding what the cost of living might be for the region. I took some time there, and you may be interested to know that according to the MIT Living Wage Calculator, that for the city in Renton and King County, a single adult with no children would have to earn $22 an hour to earn a living wage, and for two adults with two children, that wage is $45 an hour. So that's, that's a little ridiculous when you come to consider that the current minimum wage is $1,574 in the city. So with that said, I am asking the city council and the city staff to revisit this impact analysis, to conduct a more thorough research into the impact of this on regular Renton workers, regular, everyday people that are forced to work in the city for wages that do not meet the regional living wage standards. I would like to further suggest that the city council conduct this research, or at the very least, expand its current research efforts with the Equity, Housing, and Human Services Department within the city of Renton to ensure that these considerations are taken seriously and to, so that we can take a more holistic, all-inclusive approach, an approach that takes into effect equity and racial concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the next person up, I can't read the first or last name, I'm going to give it a shot. Barry, do we know who that is? Speaking on the minimum wage, is there somebody else that hasn't spoke? Oh, okay, there you go.
Greetings, council members, Mayor Pavoni, Council President O'Halloran. I apologize for hastily writing my name really muscly. My name is Bailey Madillo. I'm a recent Renton High School graduate, very exciting to be joining, very excited to be joining the workforce and being a full-fledged adult from the city of Renton. I'm coming today to speak on, on the topic of minimum wage increases specifically regarding a 19-hour minimum wage to match our region partners in South King County, Toquilla, and Sea-Tac. I want to, I want to take a moment to appreciate the hard work done by city staff in order to put together a comprehensive analysis of the impacts of an, of a minimum wage increase. And I want to thank the city staff for also taking the time and putting out a, putting out a survey to businesses in order to research impacts. I also want to echo concerns about the fact that workers and other community sources were left out of this survey, and I do urge the city to consider bringing the diversity of viewpoints of this survey to its absolute maximum in order to ensure that we are building a holistic understanding of what this city needs and what this city residents need in terms of a livable wage. And before I came here today, I had a haircut, as you can tell. It's pretty great. And me and my hairstylist talked about what minimum wage increases, because I mentioned that I was going to be testifying today regarding the minimum wage. And basically, we came to, I learned that my hairstylist actually worked, actually was a minimum wage worker who lived in South King County a very long time ago, and, and basically got like, was priced out of the state for a bit of time because they could not, could not, I believe the minimum wage was not increased at this time. And at this time, when they were working in Washington and they had to move elsewhere, and when they returned, they returned to the city of Seattle, which had piggybacked off of Sea-Tac's minimum wage increase, and was able to find work and eventually, and sustain themselves and eventually become a hairstylist, full-time job, because of strong minimum wage policy that protected them. I think one thing that Renton needs to do is, as my, as many of our peers have mentioned today, many of our neighbors, is that we are losing workers to our, our neighbors, Toquilla and Sea-Tac, because we do not have strong minimum wage policy that matches them. One thing the city can do is put in place strong minimum wage policy like what Toquilla and Sea-Tac have passed in order to meet the standard and ensure that our residents have all the resources that they need in order to live holistically and to survive and thrive, because that, I believe, is the duty of government in order to ensure that all of their residents can survive and thrive. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Patty Eichsenberger.
Hi, my name is Patty Eichsenberger. I've been here once or twice before, and my purpose here tonight is to ask you not to take our parking away from us at the Renton VFW. I would also like to invite the mayor and all the city council meeting, city council people to come to the VFW on July 21st, about 7:00 in the evening. And get there early so you can find a parking place. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up is Michael Draguilla. Draguilla. It's not Smith.
My name is Michael Draguilla. I'm not from Renton, but I spent a lot of time down here. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Renton VFW Post 1263, located adjacent to the Burnett Avenue South parking lot, site of a proposed city park. I'm not a post member, but I've enjoyed participating in post activities as a guest. I'm not familiar with everything the post has done for our community, but know that over the years, it has made many charitable community contributions, and made its hall available for many family and community meetings and events. The post has been blessed with a location on relatively quiet Burnett Avenue South, with attractive Burnett Linear Park one block to the south, and downtown Renton one block to the north. Unfortunately, the post has only 12 off-street parking spaces. Of these spaces, two are needed for handicap parking. The post is located next to the north end of the Burnett Avenue South parking lot, which has 82 available parking spaces. The post relies heavily on these parking spaces for its members and guests, to keep its finances visible, viable, and quite possibly for its financial survival. I'm here to ask that the city of Renton preserve this public parking lot, and honor the contributions our veterans and post 1263 have made and are making to our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Dan Kennedy.
My name is Dan Kennedy. I'm a member of VFW Post 1263. Whenever I have company come, I always bring them to my post. Every time I have companies and they come, we normally eat someplace in Renton. We buy gas in Renton, we shop in Renton. Our VSW post thrives in Renton. You take away our parking, you're going to take away our people. You take away our people, your bottom line goes down. We love Renton, we want Renton to thrive, we want to be proud to bring people to Renton and say, this is a city that loves its people, not one that says, yeah, we'll put a bike lane. So there's veterans that gave their, that gave part of their lives to defend the right where people can come to places like this and be heard. We'd appreciate it if that's what you would do. Hear us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. So Lorraine, you're signed up. Would you like to speak also? Okay. All right, thank you. Next up is John Burnrider.
John Burnrider, and I live in Renton, and talking about parking. And last Saturday, we had bingo, and we had the hall rented out. And I've never seen so many people in Renton this time of year. I mean, a lot of people going to different places to eat and everything else, and they depend on that parking, too. So I just hope that we can work it out where we won't lose anything. Thank you.
Okay, next up is, thank you. Next up is Jeannie Greencrook.
Hi, great. Anyhow, I'm Jeannie Greencrook. I am a Renton resident and a business owner, and I live at 82 Monterey Place Northeast. And I just wanted to say I'm here in regards to the parking that's there, and I just want people to know that I'm a life member at the Renton Post. I'm a longtime member of the Renton Eagles, and I'm a member also of the Downtown Renton Chamber of Commerce. All of these places are affected by this parking lot. And I just wanted to stand up here and see if there isn't some other avenues that could be addressed, so that we can all work it out together. Let me see here. Okay, the Red House and the VFW residential homes rely on these spaces and actually need more plus, plus. And the Burnett Park down the street, Linear Park, it needs spaces also. These homes were built for one-car parking in the rear of their homes, and the alleyways back there are not very safe, so I don't know if they're able to put much back there anyway. But we're in a new era, and families have now two and three cars, motorcycles or bikes, and the problem is not that we need, the problem is we need more spaces and using the existing garage. Oh, I was told by one of my family members that we could use the existing garage over on Fourth Avenue. And I says, yes, I'm 76 years old, almost, and I'm going to walk from there at night back and forth. That's not viable for me. But anyhow, our parking needs are great, and it's time for us to put our heads together and see if we can't put maybe a parking garage. We have a parking garage on the north side, maybe that spaces could be used to pick a parking garage over on our side, and maybe a flyover for the bikes to go over, because it's a safety issue, too. I don't know if you've been on that area, but a bicycle going down there even right now is not, not good. So a parking garage would alleviate that problem. But I know I park at the VFW, and I walk over to the Eagles, because I know if I'm going to walk or go to the Eagles, I've already got a space there. I won't find one when I get over there, or if I want to go over to, oh, any of the venues in town. You find a spot and you park. But if we want more people to come into Renton and buy from us and entertain and do things in our community, we can't service our own city people. We need more parking, and I think a parking garage would be a good idea. So I think that's something that, if we put a library on a bridge, we could put a parking garage in and make a flyover and keep them safe, because bicyclists needs to, they need to be watched over more, because they're willy-nilly. You just never know. Anyhow, I'm going to check this other spot here. Oh, I want to take note. Please take in account all the multifamily units that are now in, that are in, and the more that are being erected as we speak. So we've got more parking issues that are coming, and if we don't do something with like a parking garage, we will be in trouble. Jesse Tanner had a great vision when he put in that. Everybody thought he was nuts putting in that parking garage, but guess what? He saved the day. So maybe, Mayor Pavani, you can save the day. With that, I thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you. Next up is Jerry Bruce.
I spent the first 60 years of my life in Renton, but at present, I live in Maple Valley, but I am a strong member with the VFW. And just so everybody knows, the VFW stands for Veterans of Foreign Wars. And we're talking about taking, making a building that's been there for 75 years, and making it obsolete because we don't have any parking. The main revenue that we make, keeps the VFW going, is renting out the hall. And when we do that, you need anywhere from 50 to 150 people. We also have a luncheon there that Mayor Pavoni has attended, that once a month, and we have 50 to 60 Renton, old Renton residents that come and have lunch there every first Thursday of the month. With 21 parking spots, we would not be able to have that. Again, the main revenue is renting out the hall. If you take that from us, might as well close the hall down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Miller.
Paul Miller, 3731 Park Avenue North. I really hadn't intended to talk tonight, but I'll make it quick. I'll have a little anecdote regarding alleys, and I am against them. When I was nine years old, in a split fourth and fifth grade class, my older classmate and I, at lunchtime, decided to go across the street to the tavern and get a pack of cigarettes out of the vending machine. When we left the tavern, the very first thing we looked for was an alley. Alleys, the point of that story is, not that alleys cause people to smoke, but it gives people a place to do ill, ill things. And we recently had, my easement had a car that was parked on it, and the gas tank was drilled into it and drained of the gas. So that kind of stuff happens on alleys. And also, the east, as people would say, eastern entry on the Park Avenue is really dangerous now, even with the streets, yet alone alley sight view. No alleys, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is Judy DeSantis. No Judy? Oh, okay. Jim McNett, I believe. Sure. Yes, Jim McConville.
83. I've lived in Cannidale for the last 52 years. And when I moved in, there were seven houses on 31st Street, and now we've got them 10 feet apart. But that alleyway that was proposed in 1904 was proposed, to my recognition, is, was for a farmer that wanted access to his cows. That's how long ago that has been proposed. Well, in 1904. It was never really meant for an alleyway, but it was proposed for the farmer. Now, that might be just hearsay, but anyhow. And we have a very beautiful neighborhood. We have lots of trees. I have a garden that would be part of that alleyway that I've had for about 30 years. And I would not enjoy having an alleyway behind my house for the simple reason that it would be a detriment to people getting into my backyard, and maybe even stealing some fruit and vegetables. Anyhow, I really do not like, want to have an alleyway in my backyard. Thank you.
Marcy, are you signed up? Okay, next up is Marcy Palmer.
Hello, Honorable Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and Councilmembers. Yeah, I'm back, and I love council meetings like this. Can you hear me in the back? Okay, all right. Usually, my voice carries without one, but I just want to make sure, because it has been difficult to hear. Unfortunately, I don't think very many people heard Christie, and that's too bad. But I love a council meeting where we have a full house. Over here, we have the Cannidale. Over here, we have VFW, and thank you all for your service. Appreciate that. I agree with them, and I agree with them, as it turns out. You all know I'm in Cannidale. And maybe we could have, if I would have spoken earlier, it might have helped. I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to pull up a map during this time. I don't like alleys. I did not like alleys in 2013. I didn't like them when we put them in. And the administrator assured me this would not be for places like Cannidale, where there were really old maps that showed an alley. It would be for new development. So why are we here? Let me try to explain. You know Cannidale. You get off the freeway, the main drag is 30th, right? And there's the church. You turn, the first street is 31st. These people are from 31st, and the next one is 32nd. That's Park. All the way down those long hills is Burnett, the other main non-artillery. So two beautiful new houses were built at the bottom of, is it 31st? Both, right off Burnett. So they are alley-loaded. That's a long street, folks. In the middle, if I understood what you sent me, there are two lots that are being developed, in the middle of this long street. And that developer wants you to approve an alley from Burnett to Park. Oh, he is. So why are we here? From what I, from what I could understand from the documentation, is that someone is requesting this alley. I don't think this was ever the intent. We have a neighborhood up on the corner of 28th Street and Park Avenue that was built in the last seven years that does have all alley. This was not meant to cut through people's backyards that have lived there for 30, 40, 50 years. If you went out and walked it, it's, there's not an alley. These people's homes, they touch each other. There's the lawns, the fences, the sheds, the garages that have been allowed to be built by the city. So I think the council's going to do the right thing. I think that you didn't know about this, partly because the staff that was communicating with this group, the 80% sign that don't want it, but what I saw in the communication was, we're going to just push it up to the top. Mr. Vincent will deal with it. And that's the last communication they've had. So I know when it comes to you, you're going to do the right thing and give these people the peace of mind. Your business plan talks about livability. This is part of it. Actually, both of them are. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
I'm going to talk to the person in the sky. Judith, do we have a couple of people signed up to speak remotely?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we do. We have two people signed up to speak tonight. The first person is Rosa Karina Gallardo. Let me pull you up here. Rosa, go ahead.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Rosa Karina Gallardo. I have been a resident in Lower Cannidale, 31st Street, 1222, for 10 years. Opening the easement into an alley raises up my fears of turning my peaceful and beautiful neighborhood into a place very unsecure and prone to criminality. We will have more points of access to our houses. Now we worry about securing our front houses, and now we'll have this fear of having to secure the back of our properties. We all know for a fact that police is not going to have enough bandwidth to deal with increased propensity to criminality. These plans will turn Lower Cannidale into an unsafe place. Nobody wants the alley, nor the developers, nor the established neighbors. Please don't do this to our neighbor. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Ellie Robert Shaw. Ellie, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Ellie Robert Shaw. I want to address the council in favor of raising the minimum wage here in Renton to $19 per hour. I'm from the area, and I've lived in Renton since 2018. I've lived in the Seattle metro area since 1997. And what I've observed in my own life is what we're seeing nationally, which is that the wealth has been concentrated. which is that the wealth has been concentrated upward, sorry, I have a stutter, in the hands of a few. And economic challenges to working families have only increased. That has coincided with stagnating wages for working and middle-class people and the rise of part-time work and seconded their jobs, and also decreased labor protections. Here in Renton, we're fortunate to have industries that support highly-paid skilled workers. But for our city to function, we need all kinds of workers, including people working in retail and grocery and in service jobs. These jobs are essential to allowing all of us to live here and for our economy to thrive. I'm not under the impression that increasing the minimum wage by 325 an hour for 15% of workers here in Renton is going to magically solve all of the challenges faced by these workers who are impacted. But to me, fair is simply fair. These workers contribute daily to our city's economy while struggling themselves to live in the area. They're doing work that we absolutely need just in order to keep our daily lives going. So let's increase their well and pay and keep the money in their pockets and here in Renton. This money might otherwise go to Starbucks, to Kroger, and to Safeway in the form of the record profits that they've been reporting. Thank you to the City Council and Mayor Pavone for considering my comment. Thank you.
That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there anyone that showed up tonight that would like to speak that I didn't get to? Okay, yep. Nope. Come on, come on up and give us your name and, and.
My name's Gene Bremner. I'm from Kent, Washington, 10502, southeast 216th Street. I patronize the VFW pretty regularly. But this, I don't know what, where this plan came from. But I worked for the state for 35 years, and I know when they once get their teeth in a project, you know, they don't listen to anybody. But I'm asking you, you got your freedom here because of the veterans. And if you, they have the hall there. There's hard place to get people, find a place for halls nowadays. Lot of us are getting up there in years and asking us to walk three or four blocks in the rain. Not much snow, but lot of rain, cold weather. It's kind of impossible now. The people that have trouble walking, they can park right outside the building and walk in. And if they do this project, the VFW building will be worth zero because nobody wants to buy a place where they can't park a car. And so I'm asking you to think about your freedom and help the VFW keep their parking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Appreciate it. It is important that we hear from you. In terms of the alley, it's early in the process. Like I said, I just learned about it minutes before coming out here. The council had no idea before you all started talking. So, and in terms of us being the state, we're not the state. So we don't, we don't get a hands on our projects and, and not make changes. So we definitely listen to our residents. And once again, appreciate you all being here tonight. All right, we're going to move on now to city business, which up next is the consent agenda. There are seven items. Are there any that council would like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
Hearing none, I move that the council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Next up is unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has five committee reports to present.
Hey, Finance Committee committee report. Approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable total payment $26,32,558.94 for a number of vouchers, including payroll benefit withholding vouchers and four wire transfers. Payroll is a total payment of $1,870,299.2 for payroll vouchers that include 681 direct deposit and 14 checks. This is the May 15th through 31st pay period. Kidder vouchers, or Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling $10,589.6 and municipal court vouchers totaling $13,604.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the committee, with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a contract for the development of a comprehensive 10-year Arts and Culture Master Plan. The Finance Committee concurs with the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract with framework cultural placemaking for the development of the comprehensive 10-year Arts and Culture Master Plan. Additionally, the committee recommends approving additional budget appropriations in the amount of $146,250. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the city's property pollution and cyber insurance policies. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to renew the city's 2023-2024 property pollution and cyber insurance policies in the amount of $1,285,982.69 for the period of July 1st, 2023 through July 1st, 2024. To secure the best premium rates possible, the city's lines of coverage go out to bid every year through our third-party broker, Alliant Insurance Services. Rates are determined by market conditions, insured values, and the city's loss history. This year's rate increase is driven by hard market conditions outside of the city's control. The city will bind these insurance policies with Alliant Insurances, excuse me, Alliant Insurance Services on July 1st, 2023. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor? I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, I know we mentioned this in committee, in Finance Committee earlier, but I just want to thank the staff for their diligence in searching for the different options, insurance options. So very much appreciated on what we've been briefed on. Thank you.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding an agreement with Keating, Buckland, and McCormick Incorporated for legal services. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the May 2023 through October 2024 agreement with Keating, Buckland, and McCormick Incorporated, P.S., for the purpose of providing legal defense in inquest matters for an amount not to exceed $200,000. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final Finance Committee report is regarding an agreement with King County for the Regional Opioid Abatement Council. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve and authorize the adoption and participation in the Regional Opioid Abatement Council Agreement with King County to oversee and report on opioid remediation expenditures related to the opioid settlement funds received through the Washington State MOU. In return, King County will receive the lesser of 10% of the city's total opioid settlement or their actual administrative costs. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, next up is Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The planning development committee has committee report.
All right, this committee report is regarding the South King County Housing and Homelessness Partners 2024 Work Plan and 2024 Operating Budget. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution approving the 2024 South King County Housing and Homeless Partners Work Plan and 2024 Operating Budget. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor? I move that the council concur in the planning development committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
You. Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Thought I, didn't you? All right, we are on to unfinished business. Nope, we're on to legislation. We just did that. We have, we have one resolution for adoption.
This resolution is regarding that work plan for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, approving the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners 2024 Work Plan and 2024 Operating Budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the council approve the resolution as adopted, as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council approve the Finance Committee, no, approve the resolution as, as read, as recommended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Been a long night, Jason. All right, we're on to new business. Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, July 3rd, in observance of Independence Day, there will be no council or committee meetings. On Monday, July 10th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., the committee of the whole will be meeting here in chambers and via video conference. We have one item on the agenda. That is the Information Technology Strategic Plan Overview. And Monday, July 10th, at 2023, at 7:00 p.m., the regularly scheduled council meeting will be held here in chambers as well as via video conference. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
There is no new business, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Alberston.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any new business, but I just want to thank the community for coming and speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, July 10th, 2023, 4:00 p.m., the Finance Committee will be meeting in the council conference room as well as via video conference. There are three items on the agenda. Is authorization to purchase fleet vehicles, vouchers, and emerging issues in finance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, July 10th, at 5:00 p.m., in the council conference room and by video conference, the planning development committee will be meeting. We have three items on the agenda. 2021 Construction and Administrative Code with Local Amendments Adoption. Number two, Docket 18, Group B, D-227, impact fees, and emerging issues in community and economic development. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember McGurven.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, what's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Then moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Council President O'Halloran, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody want to stick around, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.